I'm letting everybody in.
Excellent.
Jeff, real quick, I'm gonna try and get my computer up, so if you see me pop in again.
Seeing two sides of you tonight, Michelle, computer and phone.
Hi, everyone, are we, Jeff, have people been let in at this point?
It's yours.
Excellent. All right, well, let's begin then, shall we? Before, though, we take a vote to actually open the meeting, I just wanted to remind folks that public comment is reserved basically for comments on the topics at hand. So we will have two public comment sessions. One will be after our workshop on the budget and the second one will be after our, we've attended to all of our business, please keep the comments to three minutes. We will be timing this time. So if you feel that your comments are going to be at longer than three minutes or you have more to say, please feel free to put it in writing and send it to us via email or bring it to the, to the office. We're happy to read it and put it into the public record, but we really want to be tight with the timing. There's a lot of people who want to be heard. Please remember that we are actually all neighbors. So think about that as you, as you ask your questions and you give us your comments on various things. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to open our Board of Trustees workshop. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Excellent, okay, so we are starting at 7:02 PM. So our first agenda item is the opportunity to request an add or a modification to the current agenda. Do we have any, any adds or modifications?
No.
Okay, all right, so we will move on. The next order of business is announcements. So I just wanted to alert everyone that we've been told by Royal that they will be extending their swap out bins for, for no fee until May 15th. The first delivered garbage cans, garbage bins will be this weekend on Saturday and then recycling bins will be next weekend, April 16th. And you will have up until May 15th to change your mind. If you do find that you want a different bin, please let us know at the village office so that we can make those arrangements. That's the only way we can do that. So please, if you, if you have a change of heart, you need to let us know before May 15th. Otherwise, you will be, there will be a fine, or not a fine, I'm sorry, there will be a fee. Okay, so let's just jump right into it to our budget, continued budget discussion and workshop. And I will let Michelle and Joe take it away.
Okay, everybody can hear me now, right? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I guess we'll do a quick recap of what from last week. So we're working off of the tentative budget dated for six for tonight. After last week's meeting, we made a couple of minor changes. So the net change to the bottom line of the budget was a decrease in $140. We lowered the property taxes by 3,000. So by doing that, our estimated tax bill increase comes down to 1.99%. So that's using three, it's a little over 50% of our maximum levy, which is 3.47 now, increase from year over year, 54.5% of the max. So we're right under that 2%. It's an estimation based on whatever's going on with the final assessment role. But based on the latest numbers we have from the county provided from the town, it's 1.99% increase. Also, on the revenue side, the Altis has given us a technology grant that Jeff reminded me about. And we haven't received it yet, so I put that in for 3,500 for next year. On the expense side, it made some minor tweaks to various personnel service lines based on feedback from the executive sessions. We took out 8,500 for the police locational cameras, reallocated 5,000 of that to potential hub funding. So I added a new account line, public health contractual. We added 2,000 for shared services for restrooms. That amount still needs to be finalized, but that would be for like a cleaning service for the weekends. And then we added 3,100 for Granicus, which actually might be 2,500 if we're not doing, if we're only doing one portion of their modules. So that can probably come down $600. And I lowered some of the gas lines using, I was using 4.5, $4.50 and I lowered that to $4.30 and that gave us some savings to add in some other expenses to the budget. Does anybody have questions on the changes that we've made so far?
When do you, when do they finalize the assessment roles?
When I asked Lisa from the county, she said she should have a firmer number by the last week of April. That right now it's only mostly going to be changes in exemptions. So buying and selling if exemptions come off or come on. Otherwise, the, the values of the houses themselves are the same, but the exemptions play into a factor of the tax levy.
Got it, so you, they get, they take that, they factor in all the equalization rates and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Prior to that. Okay, got it. And the hub, public health contractual, is that a state category or that's just something that you felt is where it should go?
That's a state account line and I looked up a couple of different public health lines. I guess it depends on what the contract with the hub would look like, depends on the appropriate account line. But if it's for mental health and things like that, I thought maybe, but that account line, we could change at any time.
Okay.
Where'd you guys go?
But that's just a way of being able to fund the hub, right? I mean, it's not how, whatever the title is of the line is more of a internal process situation than a having anything to do with the actual money going to the hub, right?
Yeah, I mean, we should have it the best that we can for the state, but if we have it here and then, you know, the contract evolves and, you know, maybe it does end up back in the police budget or something like that, we can make a budget adjustment for reporting accurately.
Got it, okay.
And just one more question, anything new on the state budget? I just pulled up something before we started and it seems like they're still arguing over the football stadium and something else of substance.
Now, the, I looked, I haven't looked today, but I looked yesterday and they filed a budget extender until Thursday. So that makes me think if the budget is currently extended until Thursday, they might take, my personal opinion is they're gonna take till Thursday to figure it out. But right now, even though they're past the deadline, I guess they have until Thursday before they have to decide to extend again.
Okay.
No update.
Got it, so it wouldn't be unreasonable if, in fact, we adopt a budget, they don't have a state budget yet. It comes in and we get some money over and above what we thought and we can just roll that into revenues and reduce the tax rate. Is that a logical way to do it?
So if once we adopt, we can't change the tax rate. The tax warrant, the tax bills, everything's dated the day that the village board adopts the budget. But we have until May 1st, so we schedule adoption, the last meeting, probably, I think, that's April 27th. So I would assume by then the bu, the state would have their budget done so that we would know hopefully what the fundings are.
So where does the revenue go, just goes into more fund balance? Is that how it works?
Yeah, I mean, we have aim there, so it's 16,000 and change. If they say went up to 20, that's just 4,000 over revenue and then it would go into fund balance or if we spent, we could do budget amendments. There's a lot of things that you can do, but if it's not substantial, it's just gets rolled down into fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Any board members have any questions?
Nope. So where are we, I mean, now that we are here, where do we go next? Just the public, the public hearing?
So the public hearing is set for next Wednesday. There's, we've been thinking about maybe doing a small presentation, you know, summarizing everything that's been going on, maybe go through some of the schedules, a little budget memo, something very short, concise, probably repetitive, but summarizes this whole process. And then if the public has any comments, they can ask them tonight at the public hearing. And then depending on feedback, if there's nothing that needs to be changed, that would go to adoption. And if we hear back from the state, you know, I'll try and make those changes before. And even after the public hearing, you know, if we get word from the state that something went up, I'll have that done and changed for the 27th. And, you know, if we need a workshop meeting in between, that, there's an empty week with no budget discussions that would be reserved if we need them.
Barring any craziness on the state level, we're pretty much done in terms of numbers and public feedback.
Like after the public hearing, yep. We can make changes, but usually after the public hearing, the budget that we're presenting next week is, you know, 99.9% done. That's why if there's any feedback from the trustees or anything that is not in the budget that should be or should be changed, you know, we can work on that in the next couple of days.
Thank you, Michelle.
Would it make sense to just knock down the Granicus number a little bit? I mean, I know Catherine and Eliza have been kind of digging into it a little bit and it seemed like the service that we would probably want to use is the $2,500 service. But, I mean, it's 600 bucks, so it's not gonna necessarily change anyone's life, but.
In the short run, I don't think we need more than the 2,500 to, because what we're gonna try to do is figure out what's out there to, to, you know, as we rewrite the code, right? So that it's a more kind, a kinder, gentler code. But, you know, we'll have the knowledge of what we're trying to be kinder and gentler to. But, so the idea of doing that in this budget, out of this budget is, that ship has sailed, as they say, I think.
No, it's part of the current budget that we're.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna try and do it in the 21, 22 budget.
He is available and apparently the contract is now extended until, I believe it's May 25th. I just, you know, I was just on the phone with him. And he's prepared to present whenever we deem it, you know, possible. I don't know if next week is a good opportunity with all the things that goes on and I didn't think so.
But if, if I'm not mistaken, the Granicus contract proposal was a two-year sign up. Is that, can it be one or does it have to be two?
Well, it can be one, it can be two, but we can, we can do the 2,500 and then add modules. You don't, you know, you're not fixed at what you start out with. You can add any number of the other things as you go along. But when we finally have a handle on how many Airbnb, Verbo, you know, type places we have in the village, then we'll have a better, you know, able to move forward and get the next module. I think.
So Michelle signed a Granicus, like for May 15th. And it was a one-year agreement at 2,500 bucks. How would that work in the respective budget years?
So, you know, if it's a one-year contract and we're assuming it's gonna be a one-time contract, then it wouldn't even need to be in next year's budget. But if it's going to be an annual reoccurring service, even on a one-year contract, but you renew it every year, then I think it needs to be in next year's budget. It's what we, are we using it to identify and, you know, give us the data and then we're done with them? Or do we need this on an ongoing basis, right? So then it would be reoccurring.
Well, I mean, I feel like at this point, I, I haven't seen the, their presentation and other board members haven't either, so I don't feel personally like I'm prepared to guess even at whether we would need it for an ongoing basis or just a one-time use. I'd like to sort of understand that more. So I wonder if should we maybe plan to have another meeting next week or a short one, just so we can see a presentation? Do we have to have a full meeting, Jeff? Like how would that, how would that work? Just so that we can know if we need to put it in the, you know, in the budget moving forward.
It is, it is, I'm sorry, Jeff, it is recurring tweaks. It would not be so, I mean, unless we found it entirely ineffective and we didn't choose to go forward with it. I think the idea of having a two-year initial contract was that the rate would start lower and, and not escalate, you know, quickly.
So if it's a recurring charge, it really doesn't matter. I mean, if we use the money this year, great, if not, that's fine, that's already in the budget for next year, so. There's not that push, that depression to spend it right now or lose it.
Okay, and so there, I mean, the, in terms of seeing a presentation before we adopt a budget, is that just, is that necessary? You know, is, or do we just focus on, on the budget and get that done and then we can do a presentation after?
I think for the trustees' purposes, there was a presentation that Catherine and I attended that was emailed to all the trustees. So if you haven't reviewed that, then it would probably be helpful for you to inform your decision on, on that kind of thing. But I, I thought the idea of starting it sooner was just so that we would have data while we're writing the new, a new version of the STR code.
So how about we keep it in at 2,500? Let's not try to cram a presentation, because I got a feeling, because next week's the, the business meeting too, right? Yeah, so and they're typically kind of long, we don't necessarily want to make it an overnight.
Why?
Don't drive a sleeping bag?
And make it 2,500, then knock down the tax rate a couple of bucks? Is that unreasonable?
No, I think that's reasonable. I was, I just wasn't sure if everyone felt the need to have a presentation before you made that decision or not. But if, if everyone is comfortable with that number and moving forward, then I fully support that.
I'll take out the 600 and take it off the, the tax levy.
What does that bring us to, you know, off the top of your head?
No, but I, if you keep talking for another minute, I can get it if you have another question. Does anybody else have other questions about the budget? I just want to make sure everybody feels like their questions are answered, that we're in a comfortable spot. There were no changes to water and sewer. I spoke with Matt, may change some of the allocations in terms of account codes, where he might want to put some more repairs into, out of sanitary sewer into the sewer plant itself. Spare everybody on what it means, it's still sewer improvements. It's just, is it outside the plant or inside the plant? It sounds like, you know, his priorities are inside the plant. But the flat, the dollar amounts would stay the same on the bottom line. It's just moving from one repair line to the other. And if I do make those changes, you know, I'll send out an email. But in terms of numbers on water and sewer, we talked about the rates. Everyone seems comfortable going up a little bit on the usage. Board will have to adopt that formally, you know, before June 1st, because that would be the next quarter for billing. I think June 1st, June, July 1st, sorry. And then gonna ask again, anybody, you have any questions?
Joe, looks like Joe has a question.
Just something that's.
Thank you for that answer.
I'm buying your time, how's that, Michelle? Michelle, Tweeps and I are gonna start digging into the village handbook, which is kind of the, the booklet that defines work rules and benefits and all that kind of stuff. So we're gonna start in on that next week. There's some structural changes that probably need to be relooked at. Tweeps is gonna take lead on it and then we're also gonna work with our attorney. So I think that will be something that will be a positive financially. But not, you know, obviously between now and next week.
1.95% tax bill increase instead of 1.99 estimated.
Estimated.
You're good, Michelle, you're good. Well, I think unless anyone has any other questions, thank you, Michelle, for your diligent and hard work. I really appreciate it and I've actually learned a lot from this process. I'm very hard-headed when it comes to numbers, so you actually made it relatively doable and I stayed awake the whole time, so I feel like that's positive in and of itself. So thank you for your hard work. Really appreciate it, yeah. Okay, so we are now at our public comment portion of the evening. Again, I want to remind everyone, if you make a comment, you can see on the topic that we just discussed, which is the budget, please keep your comments to three minutes. We will be timing and we will mute you after 3.1 minutes. So, any hands, any questions?
Nobody has their hand up, nobody's, everybody's muted, so.
Okay.
Next.
Well, all right, moving on then. So the next order of business is just a, the breakneck ridge issue, which as we all know, as the season gets warmer, the crowds come out and they all attempt to climb breakneck and many are successful and some are not. And this becomes an issue for all of our emergency services who respond, walking up, getting up the trail to take care of injured people, people who've lost their way, people who decided to go up breakneck in flip flops or without food or water, all not very good ideas. And it means that our first responders spend many hours, a lot of hard work to help these folks to carry them down. It's a big strain on all of our services. These folks are, are answer in response to anything that happens in the village. So obviously, if we have entire teams up on the mountain, God forbid if something else happens in the village or elsewhere. So the town has decided to write a letter, basically asking the MTA not to open the breakneck station, to not encourage people to come, certainly from the train station up to, to have easier access to breakneck. And I personally am in support of writing a letter or a resolution in support of keeping the train station closed until at least the Fjord Trail is partially up and running or, you know, there's, there is kind of a more systematic way of people getting to the trail. We have potentially more funding for services for the folks who are taking care of the people who get hurt up there. So I would propose that we join the town in writing some sort of letter in, in support of keeping the station closed until further review of our resources and Fjord Trail up and running or some portion of it anyway. So we don't have to vote on that, but I'd love to hear if anyone has issue with that or if you agree or like to support that, then we can move that forward.
I, I agree, we, we need to do something. What happened to the, there were the people that were like had the little hut at the base? They were sort of pre-screening people going up there. And that seemed to be working for quite a while. They were like trail stewards or, I don't know, but you know, if they saw somebody who flew flip flops, they literally said, this is not the hike for you today.
Right, I don't, I don't know, to be honest. It's a conversation, I know that the conversation was had with state parks, with the MTA, with other representatives about addressing folks before they get on the trail. I don't know specifically about that hut and those, and those people when they start, if they're still out there, I don't know.
Haven't seen them.
I think the main issue with the train station is that the whistle stop or whatever it's called is further north. So the, the people in the little hut are further south than that.
Yeah.
They need to re-camp.
They need a second hut and probably more people from the state kind of helping out on that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, and more parks rangers on the trail to, to make sure people don't fall off. Yes, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Good question. What will happen if you close that station? Before that station existed, people got off at Cold Spring and walked the whole route of, of to Breakneck Ridge from here, which creates enormous pedestrian unsafety and it, it makes it more dangerous in this way than less dangerous maybe on the trail if we close that rail stop. So I, I guess I wonder if, you know, we're sacrificing one safety for the other. I do think it's a crazy burden and I, for our, our emergency service providers, but I would, I would be cautious about it just because I think maybe it, it's worth a conversation with the state to find out if, for instance, they can add more of those trail huts that tell people, no, you can't take this hike today, rather than having them walk down 9D. People will come for Breakneck Ridge anyway, if you close the trail, they'll come anyway, they hike it anyway.
Well, the train stop is actually currently closed and has been the stop for, for a while now, so it's more continuing to keep it closed. But I hear you that it doesn't, it potentially takes care of one issue, but doesn't take care of the issue fully that we have people walking up there. I think, I think the objective of this supportive letter and resolution is to, to make, to bring to light the issue and to have more conversation with the state, various agencies to get them to recognize that this is a very significant tourist situation and there's a lot of dangers, whether it's walking, just getting there or getting up the mountain. So I think you're right and I think that should be, that needs to be addressed as well, 100%.
Well, if, if that's the purpose of the, of the letter, I'm absolutely for advocating to get the state to recognize that there is a public risk and a cost of the emergency services and caring for safety in this particular very dangerous hike. So I'm, I would support a letter in that case.
Great.
Yeah, I'm on board.
Catherine?
Yes, on board.
All right. Then the next item on the agenda is the visitor center, public bathrooms and creating a schedule for opening and closure for the, for the year. I think at this point, you know, we, we should just put to bed the idea that Cold Spring is not a 12-month destination. It fully is at this point. We should have the bathrooms available to folks seven days a week. And we should talk about what we think a, a schedule, you know, that would make sense, keeping in mind that it is not a heated facility. So, you know, there will, and until we can make those investments, you know, we will actually have to technically close it, but that closure can be, you know, January 1st to say, I don't know, March 30th and have an opening date of April 1st to December 31st or something like that. This is up for. December thirty-first or something like that. Um, this is up for discussion. Anyone have any?
Well, I, I think that I was told by Bugsy that it is heated. So there is heating there. Um, that, that's what I've been told.
See, yeah, there is, okay. There's some, I've heard that. And then I also heard that it was not. So, um, we might, I guess we need to get some like, uh, clarification. My understanding is that there is heat in, um, not in the bathroom, but in the visitor center that
Keeps the volunteer warm.
Yes, but also kind of goes into the bathroom, but it's not heated. So in theory, the pipes could still freeze. This is my sort of non-technical understanding. Um, but I, I, uh, you know, if there's someone, if there's someone who's, who knows more about the, the heating of, of our public restrooms, I'm all ears.
So can I make this suggestion? Um, rather than debating when we should close it and how much heat it gets or doesn't get at this point on April sixth, maybe if we could just decide when they're going to open. And I had heard a date of this Sunday, uh, which I don't know what that date is. Uh, I don't know if that's an accurate date.
The tenth.
Okay. Um, whatever the date, it's ready. I know Bugsy was grouting tile today and I know he had to put in other stuff. So it'll be open, obviously within the next few days. And if we could maintain the status quo of what we did last year as far as cleaning it for, let's say, thirty days, I, I'd like to explore some different options of how we address the cleaning and maybe indirectly, this will also address the heating issue. Um, I'd like to engage a conversation with the chamber creatively. I don't want to tell them what they have to do and don't have to do and what they have to spend or don't have to spend. But I think if we put our heads together in thirty days and also kind of tie in this whole other cleaning within the village as a master contract, and then come back in, let's say thirty days, and then I can kind of tell you what I think we're at, where we're at. And just triage it for the next thirty days. Cause I know the bathrooms to some extent have a life that carries on extensively in conversations. Uh, and I don't think it's necessary at this point to have that drama. Um, but I'd like to explore a few ideas in the next thirty days. Come back to the board. Uh, maybe they work, maybe they don't work. Uh, maybe they're crazy, but maybe they're actually pretty good. And let's just maintain the status quo of cleaning it between now and those thirty days.
So the Great idea. It's a great idea because it gives you a chance to really assess. I, I think it really, I mean, um, when the booth was first put together, it was, you know, just a couple of volunteers and, um, it basically opened Memorial Day weekend and it closed Veterans Day weekend. Not that you could tell my father not to go down there because he'd just go in. He'd just do it to get out of the house. But, um, you know, it, I think the issue is just in the winter, the, the pipes. I, I think there's enough heat in the, in the others, but you've got to address the thing holistically, not just the parts of what's wrong with it. So, um, who knows? Maybe there's enough land down there we could add on and add some bathrooms.
And maybe we can come up with a solid plan. That's a two-year plan. So we don't have to talk about it for twenty-four months.
Oh, my God.
And, you know, kind of dig in creatively rather than publicly kind of negotiate with the chamber when they're not here. Um, that's just my suggestion.
I can reach out to the chamber and ask them if they would be willing to, um, support the same cleaning service that they did last year for, you said two months, Joe, or the one month, two months?
Just to get Days. I mean, if they committed to sixty days, it gives us a little more wiggle room. I think I can manipulate something on Sundays to help the village. The highway guys can do Monday through Friday. Uh, you know, it's this way, we don't have a, you know, a foot on our throat trying to make decisions about things that we're not fully. And we got a lot of stuff to think about and work on. You know, let's prioritize, in my opinion. They'll be playing, they'll be open, people will be able to go to the bathroom, the merchants will be happy, the residents will be happy. And anyone else who goes to the bathroom there will be happy. I think there's an opportunity in the restrooms to promote the chamber also because the walls are white and bare. I've been in public restaurants that have really nice public art to them, but I've also been in some that have promotional stuff. It's a captive moment in time.
Yes.
No, it is what it is. We could promote the village, you know, in a way possible.
We don't, we don't want to turn it into a library, but we might as well give them something to look at.
No, it just, so that's all I'm suggesting. You know, give me thirty days to play around with some ideas, everybody in the loop. And if nothing comes of it, then we're back where we started today, but at least we gave it a good old try, as they say.
Excellent. I support that. Thank you, Joe. That's very reasonable. And thank you again. I think we mentioned this last week, but thank you again for taking on all the, all the dirty work.
That's all right.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, so now to, uh, board business. Um, we have approval of the final listing for fire, uh, fire service award. Um, unless anyone has any questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Okay, moving on. Um, give some project updates really quickly. Um, I will let Joe take this one about the fire, about the firehouse, since it was your, your, uh, your great quick work that got something that was, um, needed repair quickly, taken care of after months and months and months of previous administration sitting on it. So Joe, take it away.
Okay. So quick recap, last week at the board meeting, we approved a contract with Puro Clean to remediate the mold in the basement of the firehouse. Uh, they started the work this week. They completed it this afternoon. Uh, so the project is done and complete. Uh, I was there both days. It absolutely looks fabulous. You could eat off the floor in the basement of the firehouse. Nobody probably would or would even think of that, but it actually is that clean. Uh, it's been encapsulated, so that will last almost forever. Uh, they also threw out a lot of the junk that was in there. Uh, they rented a ten-yard container. Uh, thank you, Phil Heffernan, for allowing us to use his driveway as a staging area for two days. And it came out great. Uh, there's still a couple of things we have to do as part of this project. There's the door that has to get replaced. Uh, it's rotted and the two old windows that have plywood on them also have some rot to it. Those need to get replaced. But from all said and done, you know, these guys worked great. They came quick. They had an opening in their schedule. They brought extra guys and they banged the whole thing out in forty-eight hours and they did a really nice job. Um, I've got pictures I sent to everybody today. And it was good. It was a fairly simple process done, you know, in a timely manner. And I emailed the, the deputy or the chief for the fire department and the president uh, with pictures as well, and they were happy that it finally got done.
Excellent. Well done, Joe. That's great.
Thanks, Joe.
My pleasure.
And I'm sure the fire company is ecstatic in sitting on the floor eating as we speak. Um, okay. The next is the fjord trail, um, community meeting. So, um, we have asked um, them to give us a presentation, um, a full village presentation. Um, we are looking at May as a date. We would do it, uh, um, at the firehouse so that we can, um, accommodate a large group of folks. Um, we will keep you posted on that date and, and notice it. So you have time to, to join us for a presentation on, on the trail in their current, um, where they are right now. Um, and then the next, uh, update on the train underpass, uh, last Friday, the mayor and myself met with, uh, Bugsy and Matt and folks from the engineering, various engineering departments at the MTA, um, and the Metro North. And, um, we talked about, uh, the ongoing issue of the water that is spilling out of the walls, um, on, certainly on big rain occasions, but also, um, just even in, you know, um, sort of light rain that we've had today. So we know that there's an issue. Um, it has been suggested by them that we do some initial inspection, which would, uh, mean basically putting a, a snake with a camera through, um, the drains to, to take a look at what's going on in the pipes and in the wall to see, um, if there's, you know, what, what the damage is, um, to sort of assess what, what the next steps would be. The same person would then do, uh, sort of a project plan. So we could have, so we could sort of budget out uh, what this would mean. Um, and then, uh, have further discussion with Metro North about um, funding for whatever we find out, um, as it relates to repair work that's needed. Um, it was a really great conversation. Um, they were very, uh, open to our concerns. Um, there was water coming out of the wall as we were standing there. So it wasn't, uh, wasn't one of those things where we say like, there's a problem and then you go and there, no one sees the problem except for you. Um, so they know that it's happening and, um, and they're willing to work with us to address it. So I think that's really great. Um, and that's moving forward and hopefully we will have some more news to share with you on that. Um, okay. Now we get to approval of bills as I am not the number person. I'm going to ask someone else to please, um, make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion to approve batch sixty-four thirteen in the amount of twenty-five thousand eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded? I didn't hear.
Joe.
Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent.
It's nice not to see all those truck repair bills.
Yeah.
Isn't it, Joe?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, um, okay. So now we are to our second, uh, public comment session. Um, please raise your hand if you have comments or questions for, for the board. I don't see your hands. You definitely don't have a comment or a question.
I might. What's the status of the C-streak negotiations and or contract?
Hmm, good question. Um, I have not, uh, been involved in any additional conversation past what, uh, happened, I guess at this point about a month ago. Is that right, Eliza? That's about the last time the conversation with C-streak? Do you have an update for us or is it basically status quo?
I, I mean, they're, um, sort of proposing some more or less the same as last year in the fall. Um, and they're interested in thinking of more creative ways to work with the village of Cold Spring and the mayor is in negotiation. So I don't feel comfortable with sharing the details, but, um, I, I assure everyone that whatever is brought forward that gets past Kathleen's, um, review will, will then be debated or shared in the public. So I don't think there's a lot more to share.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, it looks like it's up.
Wow.
Wow, tweet.
I have a public comment.
Oh, Catherine, go ahead.
I would like to wish Jeff a very safe and restful vacation.
I'll second.
And hardest working man or one of the hardest working men in Cold Spring.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff. You do.
Thank you.
Do an amazing job. And, um, so that's why I actually want to tell you that you can't go on vacation next week.
Well.
April Fool is over, Tweeps.
True. Fair enough. All right. Well, at seven forty-four, I've given you back hours of your lives, folks. So I'd like to move to a Jordan, a Jordan. Is any, can we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Enjoy your evening and thank you for attending.
Thanks. See you too.
All right.
Bye.